Gentlemen, welcome to the October 30th, 2019 zoning board of adjustments meeting. Our next meeting will be on Wednesday, November 20th, 2019. So could everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Patrick, if you could please read the preamble?
Sure. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We will proceed with the petitions in the order they are listed on the engendda unless the board deems it appropriate to take a petition out of order. State law and local ordinances set out the criteria that must be met in order for this board to grant a request. The minimum requirements are outlined on the form provided by the community development office, and the petitioner should proceed in this, with this format to provide adequate justification for the board to grant the request. The chair will open the meeting to hear testimony either for or against the request. All discussion will be between the speaker and the board. Please be respectful of all, and in the interest of time refrain from repeating previous testimony. No new documentation will be accepted by the board for consideration this evening, but the board reserves the right to ask for additional testimony at any time. After hearing the facts from all parties regarding a petition, the chairman will close the public hearing, and the board will deliberate and vote on the request before moving on to the next petition. Please turn off all cell phones.
Would everybody who plans on speaking tonight please stand to be sworn in? Okay, if you could please raise your right hand. Swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you. So, before we get started, we'll be having Ben sit in for Rod as he is not here tonight as our fifth member. So the first petition, Chestnut Hill Properties has withdrawn their petition. So for the record, I'm going to read in their withdrawal letter. So, "Dear ZB A members, Meridian Land Services Incorporated, on behalf of Chestnut Hill Properties LLC hereby request that their variance case 2019-29, as submitted for a public hearing at the September 25th, 2019 zoning board of adjustment meeting, and subsequently tabled to the October 30th, 2019 ZB A meeting, will be withdrawn without prejudice." This is from Meridian Land Services. So they are withdrawing their petition entirely. So the next petition, Triangle Credit Union petitioner and Apple Development Limited partnership owner, variance under section seventeen point ten point three of the zoning ordinance to allow a third ground sign on the property whereas a maximum of two are permitted. Parcels okay at 360 Daniel Webster Highway in the C2 general commercial aquifer conservation, planned residential development overlay, and elderly housing overlay districts. Tax map forty dash three, lot zero zero one, case twenty nineteen dash thirty. If you could please give us a brief overview of what you're looking to do, and then we'll... Oh, I'm sorry. If you could just sign in and make sure that the light on your microphones are lit bright green. If you could please just tell us a little bit about what you're looking to do, and then proceed through the five points.
Yes, thank you for listening to us tonight. My name is Mark Warner. I'm the executive vice president of Triangle Credit Union. We are building a new branch here in town in Plaza, 360 Plaza. And we've basically purchased our, doing a ad lease there and building up a billion building. So we don't own the land. We are just leasing the space in the mall parking lot, and we're creating up a roughly two thousand square foot building. Right in the front corner, right by the entrance.
Is your microphone on?
Is it bright?
Now it's on better.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
No, it's... But you don't need to repeat.
Alright, thank you. And so what we're looking to do is, there's a couple variances that we need. The building we're building and where we're located, we're going to have a small sign on the existing pylon sign for the mall, but really coming actually north into Merrimack. Really seeing the building is difficult, and really would like to put a freestanding sign within our landscaping area, within our curbing, right next to the building rather than attaching it to the building, because there's really no place to attach a freestanding sign or a sign on the building. So we want to put down two pylons. And it's roughly a little bit larger than what the ordinance is saying, what, thirty-two square feet for that location? And we're looking for forty-eight square feet. So the two variances, one for the freestanding and one for the size.
Good evening. My name is Denny Maltese. I'm with Classic Signs, and I'm representing Triangle Credit Union for these appeals. If you'd like, I can go to the five points of law. The five points are very similar for both...
Is your microphone on?
It is on.
Is it bright green?
Check one, two.
And if you could please, when you're going through the points, just stop at the end of each point so that we can ask questions?
Certainly.
Thank you.
"Granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. The ordinance allows a business to have a freestanding sign located at the appropriate setback off the roadway. A properly sized, visible, legible, freestanding sign will specifically aid the traveling public to safely identify the location of their destination early enough to make safe turning decisions to gain entrance to the business property. It's in the public interest to have adequate advanced warning and recognizable identification for safe travel."
I guess my only question is, is there going to be any type of additional signage on the building?
There are non-illuminated identification signs above the entrance. I've provided, you know, a full rendering set.
Okay.
Have you been shared with those?
They have.
I think so, yes.
It's not feasible to put illuminated signs on the elevations facing Daniel Webster Highway or at the right facing the parking lot. There has been permit granted for a small illuminated halo lighted sign on the backside of the building that's facing the mall that wouldn't even be visible by the traffic. So it's not feasible to put illuminated signs there because there's steel beams right behind there. So we opted to put non-illuminated letters just to identify their entrance. So the freestanding sign will really be the only dominant illuminated sign in front of the building.
Richard?
Yep.
Is there any reason you can't put an illuminated sign on the DW highway side of that building, on the building?
The way the building's been designed, it's just not feasible. It's just very angular and very difficult to position. And believe me, I have tried. I've looked at a lot of different options to do that, and it's just very ineffective.
It doesn't, it doesn't look angular to me. It looks like there's a flat side on that building that you could put a sign on facing DW highway.
It's all glass. It's all glass, really. And our industry standards, signs parallel to the road are very ineffective. Perpendicular signs to the road have been proven by the industry to be the most effective way to advertise.
I understand that, but I'm saying if you've got a building that has a frontage that is facing DW highway, to put an illuminated sign on that building seems to me...
We've looked at all the options and from all the angles to view that signage with all the competing elements around there, and the setback is significant off the road. It would be very difficult to make that work effectively. You know, the important thing is to brand the location with the corporate identification standards that are in use by Triangle Credit Union.
Understand, but you're also in a PUD. Okay.
Should I go to the next point?
Yep.
"The spirit of the ordinance is observed. The ordinance promotes clear effective signs for a business typically located on a property with frontage located directly on the roadway. The existing mall property frontage is considerable and allows for the mall in its entirety to have two signs, per the ordinance, for which sign permits and variances have already been granted. Those two signs are to advertise for the mall in total and have no specific benefit to Triangle Credit Union other than possible minor tenant panels, as was previously mentioned. The Triangle Credit Union business footprint is set within the mall parking area, and this is a fairly unique situation for the town of Merrimack. There are not many businesses set within the parking lot of a plaza, if any. I mean, I've been looking throughout the entire town. This is a very unique situation. The Tri... I apologize. It's further, there's further encumbrances by the guard rail that stretches all the way across the front of the credit union building and the entire plaza. When the variance is granted, the spirit of the ordinance is maintained by allowing a freestanding sign specific to the credit union business in the same way as it would be allowed if the location had frontage directly on the roadway. So if in fact Triangle Credit Union, their business was located anywhere else on the Daniel Webster Highway, they would be allowed a freestanding sign with a ten-foot setback off the roadway. In this particular case, as indicated by my evidence that I provided, the setback is fifty-six feet. And that's a problem. Any questions?
Any questions from the board?
Alright, the next point, point number three. "Granting the variance will do substantial justice. The ordinance allows for up to two freestanding signs for the overall mall property. The ordinance does not take into consideration a separate freestanding business set within the footprint of the mall parking lot. This is an injustice to this business that is separate from the mall itself, allowing a variance for the credit union to enjoy a freestanding sign the same as any other business in the Merrimack community does substantial justice to alleviate this oversight." Those are the points I made previously.
Any questions?
Point number four. "For the following reasons, the values of the surrounding properties will not be diminished. The few properties that have direct exposure to the mall benefit from having proximity to goods and services they need. Granting a variance will allow Triangle Credit Union's standard corporate identity to be easily seen and will identify additional beneficial services needed by the general citizens and further benefits the surrounding properties. The traffic flow will benefit with adequate signage and branding of the new building being added to the overall mall property. So the traveling public will not bypass the location, forcing the need for unsafe U-turns in adjoining parking lots when they miss their entrance to get back to their original destination." Another point to add to this, there are hundreds, if not many hundreds, of new properties being built all over Merrimack that have lots of apartments and condos, and lots of new people moving into the area that will certainly benefit from the ability to have a financial institution in their neighborhood. So I think that's a benefit to these folks.
Any questions? Okay, so I guess if we can move on to unnecessary hardship.
Unnecessary hardship, sure.
Five A1.
"There's several conditions where the literal enforcement of the ordinance causes an unnecessary hardship to Triangle Credit Union. Item A, the credit union location is set high up above the street level behind a guard rail and does not enjoy a separate or individual entrance to their business off the Daniel Webster Highway. Item B, being setback considerably far from the travel lanes causes a hardship, making signage and lettering more difficult to read and identify as compared to other typical businesses with frontages directly on the roadway. Item C, the only access is shared with all other businesses with customers entering and exiting the general mall parking area. Granting the variance to allow a freestanding sign will identify the target destination for the traveling public. This alleviates the hardship of the lack of a specific entrance to the exit and exit to the credit union. Item D, due to the special condition of this property being located within the parking lot footprint of a shopping mall, this distinguishes it from other typical businesses in the area. The signed ordinance imposed on the overall mall property should not disallow this separate business, the same sign rights applicable to any other business, causing an undue hardship for Triangle Credit Union, in my opinion."
Does the board feel that unnecessary hardship has been discussed thoroughly enough?
I think it's been discussed. I don't agree with it, though. The credit union, first of all, it doesn't sit high above. Actually, if anything, it's on the same level as the road, maybe just a little bit more elevated. I don't necessarily think that somebody's going to miss Triangle Credit Union being in that parking lot. You drive by that area and that place is mobbed with places, mobbed with people. So I don't think that they necessarily missed the building itself because I, Triangle Credit Union's got pretty distinct designs on their buildings. So I don't think that, I disagree with that. I also know that Hayward's, which is the other pad in there, they don't seem to have any, they don't have any freestanding sign that has, and their business is not inhibited by any way, shape, or form. They're wall-to-wall almost every night. And I do agree with you that it is unique, that it is a pad inside a shopping area, but people that are coming into that area, there's a stoplight there to slow down traffic. People easily, as they're coming down that road, there's a lot of visibility. As you come down, as you're heading southbound, you could see it all right there. You're right, coming northbound, maybe it's the sign, the sign with the tenants would be more of that. And then the other side of it is, is that I do know for this particular shopping area that a highway sign has been approved, and should the person, should the gentleman that owns the area, I believe he's going to be using it to display for tenants that are going to be there. So there's that aspect, and that's on the highway. That doesn't even see that. So I don't necessarily agree with the hardship that's there because I think that there's a lot of visibility for any business that is in there. But that's my, that's my take on it. Lynn, what were you going to say?
I agree. I think your business in its location is significantly more visible than, with the exception of Hayward's, any of the other businesses there. As you're driving down the highway, you're not going to see easily the other businesses that are along the strip. They're going to see Hayward's, they're going to see Triangle. You're right there. I don't see a hardship to this. And you chose this location. You chose it because I think it's a viable location for Triangle. I think there's an advantage to having you there. I definitely think there's an advantage to the town, to having Triangle as part of the town. But I don't see the hardship to requiring us to allow a separate sign. You've got a, you've got a building there. You can choose to make that building such that you can put a lighted sign on the side facing DW highway. That's your choice.
May I respond, or?
Yeah.
No, appreciate that very much. We do have almost just under three thousand members already in Merrimack, so certainly looking forward to getting to the town. Certainly, the building's not lit, and therefore no signs on the building's lit during the day. I agree with your comments, Patrick, as far as going south, the building is a lot more visible. Going north, it was very, you don't see it until you're right at the light because of the sign there and the way it's laid out. My concern is getting the Triangle brand out there. This sign that we're looking to do is what we've been putting out on all our other locations, and I want to try to bring that to this location as well. Nothing on the building's lit, and I can't really do anything about that at this point in time. The building, hopefully, we're opening in four weeks is the intent, and, well, the building can be turned over to us in four weeks substantially completed. So I'm really just trying to bring the brand to that area.
Excuse me.
Ben?
Ben?
I've lived in town for over thirty years.
Ben, Mike.
Turn your mic.
Sorry. I've lived in town for over thirty years, and I've observed at least three or four financial institutions pack their bags and leave. At least one of them, two of them I did business with. And when you look at DW and how most businesses fronting on DW have signage right there. I would like to welcome the credit union to town and see them be as successful as possible, not marginally successful, but to be very successful so that they can be a important business member of our community. And I think that the opportunity and the benefits down the road to everyone, the residents in our town, would outweigh any negative aspects. And I support this fully, and I just don't see any harm in it. I don't see why the request should be considered unreasonable or not fitting to the location.
Any additional questions for the board? So before I open up the public hearing, one thing I forgot to do, and I apologize, was, Robert, do you have anything you would like to add for the petition?
That's okay. No, I'm all set.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so in that case, we'll open the public, open the hearing, open the public hearing, if I can get that out in one shot. So is there anybody that would like to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anyone that would like to speak against this petition? So if you could, if you guys could just move so he can sit down and sign in?
If you guys could relinquish the table, please?
Will do.
To the public?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Could you state your name, too?
My name's Stuart Hollander.
Thank you.
So I've been here before. I was here when the sign was discussed that's going to tower over the trees, a nicely lit LED light over the highway, so people driving up the highway.
Can we, can we just keep it to this particular petition, please?
Sure. Well, you yourself mentioned it, and I thought it was relevant because that sign will also carry advertising for the credit union. I think the most important, the most important point that hasn't been mentioned that I'd like to bring up is that I think you should take into account the nature of the business. If this were a retail shop or a fast food shop, then yeah, someone might pass it, and then business wouldn't be done there. But this is a credit union. People become members. I suppose there are some services perhaps that might be offered, like maybe notary or something like that, where you don't have to be a member, but I think by and large, the bulk of this business is membership. And I can't truly guarantee it, but I would say, you know, I guarantee within two weeks of that place opening, everyone who drives by is going to know it's there. So I think the idea that people won't realize it's there, people are going to make dangerous U-turns to get to there. I just don't see that with this kind of business. Hayward's, maybe they'll make a U-turn to get their ice cream, but not for this. It was already pointed out that it's visible from the road. I live right across the street, so, you know, we see the buildings there, and everyone is also interested, well, what is this building? So they had the benefit of being the surprise, like, well, what's this building going up? So everyone's wondering, and as soon as there was any indication, which there is now on the construction sign, everyone knows what it is. So that's not a point. Visibility, so the size of the sign. You know, I come here and I hear that there's the spirit, one of the conditions or one of the factors taken into account is the spirits of the ordinance is observed. Well, apparently, from the ordinance, the sign would be restricted to, I don't know, thirty-some, whatever it is, some smaller size. And the spirit of the ordinance clearly is to limit the quantity and the space of signs. I mean, that's what it's for. If we didn't care, there wouldn't be an ordinance for it. So I don't see how increasing it roughly fifty percent, it maintains, observes the spirit of the ordinance. It just doesn't make, not sensible to me.
That's actually the next petition right now. It's just having the third sign on the property.
Oh, the third sign. Well, then I would say that the spirit, the zoning ordinance limits the number of signs, and there's a reason for it. And the signs that are there tended to be adequate. The owner of the property has already come before this board and said, hey, I need a third one, and I think it was very generous. I opposed it, but I think it's very generous that the board granted that, and it's not a small little sign. This is going to be a big sign. They haven't put it up yet. So let's see. Okay, I think that's it. Oh, actually, I do have another question. How do you, so how does the board in general view the spirit of the ordinance? Because that's sort of mystified me. It sounds like a very broad nebulous turn. Is there any, can I ask that question? I mean, or is it just too nebulous and we'll skip it? It's a difficult one, isn't it?
So it is, meaning that the ordinances can be very meticulous at times, but the question is, is the reason behind why that ordinance was created still being followed? So in this particular case, what we're looking at is a third sign on the property. So our focus is, are they still within that ordinance? Or is they still within the spirit of the ordinance? And again, it can be very subjective. So the, I think the main point here is that this would be the only freestanding sign for this business. However, because of the way that it works in Merrimack, it's actually the third sign for the plaza. And that's really what we're looking at in this particular petition.
So they have one up front that we see, and then the second one is the one that was approved earlier in the back of the property? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that was the second one. And normally, it would be only two signs? Okay.
Yes, so allowing a third ground sign.
Okay, and I think I asked this last time, and I was puzzled by the answer, but I asked if the petition meets the four or five, I think it's five, conditions. Are you required by state law to grant it, or is it optional? And I did ask this before, but I was confused about the answer. In other words, if they meet the not contrary to the public interest, the spirit of the ordinance, and so on, there are those four or five. If those are met, are you obligated to grant, to authorize the variance? Or is it still at your discretion of the board, of this board?
For the most part, it's very discretionary because it can be subjective as well. I mean, for example, you heard us discussing unnecessary hardship. That's a hard criteria to prove. So that's, you know, there are times where the board might grant something, and in their opinion, unnecessary hardship was met. There are times where the board might not grant something, and it might because of unnecessary hardship. It's, it really, it's, I think the answer that you're looking for, if there's a granular definitive yes or no to that, I don't, I don't think that's something that we could necessarily say there is.
Okay, because last time, there was some gentleman sitting here who indicated that it was mandated by state law, and I was very puzzled when I reread it, but I think you've answered that. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the last thing I just want to, I did mention again, the big thing is the nature of this business. I don't see how the sign is needed to have a highly successful place there. Yeah, I could be wrong, but that's my view. So, thank you.
Thank you. If you folks would like to come back up to...
Anybody else want to speak?
Respond. Don't, don't we go back?
May I clarify something? As far as the second sign that's going to be on Everett Turnpike, we will not be displayed on that sign. That's an additional cost to be displayed on that sign, and just not really finding that that's going to be very effective. It's really just going north or south. I can't remember. I think it's going, traveling south is the only way it's going to be displayed, is going south for twenty seconds or so, something like that. So we will not be on that sign at all. We'll be on the pylon sign at the entrance with a small, just a Triangle Credit Union, like the rest of them there. The main point here is we really want to get a message board up so we can keep our products and services known and change it readily, change it centrally, keep it consistent from location to location. So really, the message board is a key piece of this sign, and there's really no way to hang it and see both directions on the building.
Is the, is the message board that you're describing something that's going to be digital, or?
Yes, it's a digital board, and I have made them aware of your ordinance and the rate of change, and it will comply.
Okay.
Question?
Question?
Thank you.
So this isn't just an identity board? So this isn't just an identity board illustrating triangles, whatever their logo is, and here we are. This is going to be immovable letters of some sort?
Not movable, they'll be static messages.
Whether it's digital, whether it's, you're gonna have, this is gonna be a board that's gonna have changing mess, it's not just gonna be, Triangle Credit Union is here, it's gonna be Triangle, and we're doing this, and we're doing this, and we're doing this, and we're doing, so you've got additional stuff coming up on that board.
We typically will set for two weeks to four weeks, whatever message we have out on our.
Understand, but it's a message board, it's not just a Triangle logo.
Correct. Triangle logo top, the message board right below it, yes.
Thank you. Opening it back up to the public hearing, is there anybody else who would like to?
That was a new, my, huh?
Yeah.
That was a new item. I could be very brief. Right, skip it.
You are free to come up here, however, in our case, the question we have at hand is whether or not they can put up a sign, not what goes on the sign. That's what we're evaluating. Thank you. All right, so, oh, I'm sorry, sir, you have something you'd like to share? Absolutely.
I'm right out of the way for a second, one more.
And if you could just sign in and state your name for the record? And were you sworn in as well?
No, I didn't. I'll be happy to do that now.
Okay. Could you please raise your right hand? Swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Paul Tripp from Classic Signs also, I'd like to just.
Paul, is your light on?
Yes, it is.
Pull the mic a little closer.
Sure.
Thank you.
How's that?
Better?
Yep.
Okay. So just a couple of things I'd like as a rebuttal. First of all, I don't really think it's fair to judge a company by who they are regarding this variance. In other words, the gentleman in, came up previously, said, well, I don't think a bank really needs to have a sign, everybody knows who they are. It's kind of discriminating, I think, to say, well, that's a bank, they don't need a sign, but if it was a restaurant, they do need a sign, if it's this kind of, this kind of a business, they do or they don't need a sign, that's really irrelevant to the discussion that we're here. And secondly, the ground signs that we're referring to, the large potential pylon sign that's been granted that faces a highway, that's a totally different demographic. That's highway-orientated traffic, that is not local traffic at all that's gonna see that. And I, my understanding is you visually can't even see that sign from the, it's a highway, it's gonna be completely hidden. So I don't know how much of that really should play into a factor. The other thing is, the reality is, the giant 360 Plaza sign, it's not even on the property, it's on an adjacent lot number. So I know that it serves that property, but the reality is, right now, as we stand, that lot does not have a single pylon sign on it at all. And I would disagree with Patrick, I believe that there is a hardship here because, and because the building is uniquely different than any other property in the town of Merrimack, it has been allowed by maybe potentially this board, which you have possibly granted other variances, I don't know, but the town has allowed that to happen, to sit, a freestanding building inside a property, I don't know that that has been in any other town. So the spirit of the ordinance can't really apply to this particular situation because the town has allowed this unique circumstance to happen. And part of the hardship is say, is looking at the ordinance and say, well, it doesn't really apply in this case because we have a very unique property situation here where the plaza is. And as Danny had pointed out, and is in the written documents here, the, any other business that would be on the strip right there would be allowed to have that sign by itself, it's really allowed by right, I'll speak to the electronic message because I'm, I'm sitting here now, but that's allowed by right. Everything that we're doing is allowed by rights in any other circumstance. So that's why the bank, the bank does need to have that advertising. The way that the building is designed, if you look at the photographs of there, and Danny is right, we've tried to identify this building with proper signage because of the setback, the letter heights that are there. We, in the sign business, we have lots of formulas that tell you speed of traffic and how large the letters need to be in order to be readable, and what they call the cone of vision, and we can't get the letters on that building large enough, really, in order to meet that need. I have been making signs for forty years, forty-one years, in this local community, and I know, I will guarantee you, in six months from now, the bank's gonna, all they're gonna hear from people is, I just keep driving by and I never knew you were here. So that happens. In theory, you think that it doesn't happen because everyone says, well, everyone knows where the bank is. But that's really not the case. Everyone doesn't know where the bank is, and having a freestanding ground sign that is positioned perpendicular to the road for the visibility is extremely important for the bank to have, and besides the fact that the building is setback so much further than a normal business would be in the town of Merrimack on the DW highway. Thanks for listening. Thank you. I have one question for Robert. Does the variance, if it were to be granted, does it outlive the life of the businesses that are in it?
Yes.
Okay, so this would always constitute a third sign for Apple regardless of who the?
Yeah, Triangle moves on, somebody else moves in, that business is then therefore allowed to have a ground sign as well.
But that business, or can, can Apple decide that they would like to use that sign elsewhere and relocate it, because we've given?
They could, because it's one property, yeah, they could relocate it elsewhere, yep. Because it runs with the land, not with the specific building that it's with.
Understood. Thank you.
Isn't, isn't the variance, or the request for the variance, isn't a specific location of this sign as well, right there in this parking lot?
So the, the question is, the variance itself is to grant a third sign for the property versus a sign?
It's not a location on that property, it's just for the property.
Correct. Correct. So that's, that's what I was looking for clarification. Oh, no problem. All right.
We do plan on being there forever, but that's another story.
I guess with that, we will, do, do we have any other comments or questions?
I for one hope you are here forever, because we're pleased to have you in town, and I appreciate that. Triangle has a, a great reputation, Ben is absolutely right, more so than, and I'm familiar with some of the other institutions he's talked about, I think you will be here forever. But I think you've chosen a location that is not a standalone, not a standalone location on DW Highway, which would have given you the right to do this sign. You have chosen a location that is in a PUD that limits what you can do, and the main sign that's there in that property is part of this property. It may be a different lot, but that's, East Ridge Condos, all of these stores here, those are all part of the same PUD. So that's, that's one in the same, so that's not different. But I think the location that you have chosen to do this is gonna limit you, at least in my opinion, how you can do these things, which is different than if you had done a standalone location. But like I said, you've got a great reputation, people are gonna know where you are, there's gonna be no question, and I think you'll be here forever. So that pleases me that you're here.
We, we do understand the fact that this is a leased pad site, that there are differences there versus owning the land and, and so on, we do recognize that difference. The intent was to try to get it on the building, we just cannot find a way to get it on the building. We're, you know, ten feet off the building here and a sign versus hanging outside a building, so it's really close to the building anyway, so I appreciate that, though. You know, we are trying to break in new business, really trying to bring business services to the area, you know, really, you know, been involved with the Chamber as well, trying to, you know, get involved with the businesses here in town as well, so, understand your comments.
Ben?
How many branches, locations?
This will be branch number ten.
And how many have similar or identical signage with what requests you've declared?
Seven, hopefully eight. Two of them are within a couple of companies, hospitals that we have up in Manchester, therefore they're inside the hospitals, therefore they don't have, but the other ones do have signage.
For, in a, you know, not within another business, they each enjoy this kind of signage?
Yes, sir.
The other locations are in standalone sites.
I have one other site, South Nashua, on DW Highway, South Nashua, in the mall right up, right up 166 DW Highway, and that is in a mall, so we are leasing that space, it's three thousand square feet there, but we do have a lit sign on the, on the building itself.
But not a freestanding sign?
But not a freestanding, we are, we are on the pylon sign there, yes.
Are there any other questions? Ben?
I, when you look at the way in which banking and financial services is evolving, and how much of it is becoming a virtual business over the internet, if we have a business that comes to town with brick and mortar, I would think we would want to welcome them and enable them to do the branding they feel is appropriate, that seven other towns have accepted to establish their business. I just don't see the harm in it whatsoever. If we deny this sign, what are they gonna do? They have a glass wall, and they're gonna put a huge LED sign inside the glass beaming out into the outside, or put something on the roof that, you know, lights up to the stars? I mean, I, I think this request is very normal, and I, I, again, I support it.
One thing we are really trying to bring, I appreciate your points there, bring more and more technology, this is our first location that we're really shrunk down the footprint quite a bit, and trying to bring ITMs to this location, which are basically tied into our call center, and therefore you're interacting with a customer service rep at the ATM, so to speak, and so we're trying to bring more technology to this, this space as well, so we're really trying to create that image as well, as far as technology and so on. I appreciate that.
Any additional questions from anybody? All right, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, and any commentary across the board, or do we have a motion?
Kind of, I said what I, I had to say regarding the hardship. I understand, appreciate Triangle coming into Merrimack. I just, given, given that road, I, I, I don't, I don't think that there's a hard, I don't think they meet the hardship or criteria, that's my opinion. Anybody else feel free to say whatever they'd like.
I agree with Ben.
I just don't see the harm people are making it out to be of granting the signage that has been allowed in virtually all their freestanding locations.
I think the, the issue is not so much that whether or not they have a sign of their own, it's more the question of whether a third sign should be granted to the, to the development that they're inside of, because unfortunately, that's the way it's zoned.
I understand, but I think that's being overly technical in terms of the reality of doing business in, in their location. I think that, you know, having a sign that is visible well in advance of the red light of the vehicles traveling north on DW Highway makes all the sense in the world. And the fact that they have the opportunity to message things about their products and services, I think that's a plus two, is a plus two. You know, you don't see advertise, you know, newspapers are dying, you know, so they're not gonna be spending money putting ads in newspapers, they're gonna spend money to have a very nice, professional sign that showcases their products and services. I think that's good.
Ben, I, I want to just point out one thing, there's a picture that actually goes with the second petition, and it shows them coming, it shows coming north on Daniel Webster. If I put a sign right there, the odds on me seeing that at about thirty-five miles an hour when that light's green, and then swerving over to get in that turning lane, I'll make it a U-turn. So I don't think that a sign sitting there is gonna make that much of a difference, nor do I think is it gonna put Triangle out of business, because it is, like they have pointed out, it is setback from the side of the road, but I don't think that it, I mean, I mean, look at that, you put the sign right there, I'm not, you know, tit for tat, I don't wanna go into it, but I don't see the hardship there, because quite frankly, you know, who's, you know, you're coming north, that sign's not gonna make a difference for someone to turn. That's just, that's just my take on it, so. I, I mean, I, I, I see what you're saying, Ben, but I, I kind of disagree a little bit with it, but I get what you're saying.
I, I think the ability for them, the credit union, Triangle, to provide a message to the public at large, as well as their existing customers, makes all the sense in the world. And again, I think that it's a positive message we could give to the business community by granting the variance, and by not granting it, I think you're giving out a negative message, saying, well, we're gonna limit what you can do and how you can do it. And I don't think that's good. You know, Merrimack has lost a lot of business to towns like Bedford because we, I think we're too inflexible, too rigid in how we did our planning and development, and I think we need to be more sensitive to the business community and put out a welcome sign instead of something like this.
I, I understand what you're saying, Ben, and if this were a standalone site, anywhere on DW Highway, I would have absolutely no problem at all. But this isn't a standalone site. This is in a PUD that has specific regulations, and like I said, I'm, I'm happy to have them here, but they're going into a site, they chose to go into a site that didn't allow them to do what they're now asking us to do. And it, it's kind of putting the, the cart before the horse here, that they've gone in, they're committed to do this, and they say, oh, but, but now we need this. And if we do this, then what's to prevent any other Tuckers, Thirsty Moose, Hayward's, anybody else in that site saying, oh, well, we're not visible, not anywhere near as visible as Triangle is, and we need a sign as well? Now, I don't think that's a decision that, or that's a criteria that I'm gonna use to make the decision, but I think what they're asking for is not reasonable on this site. Standalone site somewhere else on DW? Absolutely. But I think, I think it's the, it's the site that they've chosen, and the rules that are regulated on that site is what's predicating this.
Not reading their mind, maybe they thought when they chose the site that it's very reasonable to have their standard signage, and that, you know, a variance would be very feasible. And I just say.
That's twenty-twenty hindsight.
Just saying, you know, we got a technicality of a putt is being too tight, too restrictive.
I don't think it's a technicality, I think it's the way we've.
If it was a standalone, not a putt, they would have the signage.
Yeah, that's, I'm not.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion, we grant their variance as requested for the signage. Get a rebuttal, Ben.
Yes.
Take the agenda, Ben, and read it.
I make a motion, we grant.
I make a motion, we grant a variance.
I make a motion, we grant a variance under section seventeen, point ten, point three of the zoning ordinance to allow a third ground sign on the property where as a maximum two are permitted. The parcel is located at three sixty Daniel Webster Highway in the C-two general commercial aquifer conservation planned residential development overlay and elderly housing overlay districts. Tax map four D dash three, lot zero zero one, case number two oh one nine dash thirty. Second.
So, motion made by Ben, seconded by Kathy. All in favor? All opposed? So the motion fails three to two.
So now, we need to, a new motion will need to be made. Just a failed motion at this point, so you need to go the other way.
Correct. You go.
I move we deny the Triangle Credit Union and Apple Development Limited partnership variance under section seventeen, point ten, point one, uh, point three of the zoning ordinance to allow a third ground sign on the property where as a maximum of two are permitted. The parcel is located at three sixty Daniel Webster Highway in the C-two general commercial aquifer conservation planned residential development overlay and elderly housing overlay districts. Tax map four D hyphen three, lot zero zero one, case two thousand nineteen hyphen thirty.
Second. And the reason for the denial?
That they have improved hardship.
Okay, so, motion to deny the variance made by Lynn, seconded by Patrick. All in favor of denying the variance?
Aye.
Aye. All against denying the variance. So that motion passes three to two. So with that being said, the next petition was to grant a differentiation of the sign size from the ordinance. However, because the first variance has been denied, the second variance is no longer valid. Correct?
Well, no, they can, they can still go forward with it, but at this point, I, there wouldn't be a point.
Right. It's, yeah, it's deemed moot by the fact that the ground sign's not permitted, so.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we need to read it into the record?
So, the next petition that will be heard is from Curtis M. Wheeler, Jr., petitioner owner. Equitable waiver of dimensional requirements under RSA six seven four thirty-three dash A, section three point oh five of the zoning ordinance to permit the existing single-family dwelling and the southeasterly deck to remain ten point one feet from the front line, whereas thirty feet is required, ten point four feet from the side property line, whereas fifteen feet is required, and twenty-two point seven feet from the rear property line, whereas forty feet is required. Parcel is located five Lakeside Drive in the R-two residential district. Tax map six A dash one, lot one fifty-three, case two thousand nineteen dash thirty-two. And very quickly, before we get started, Rob, is there any commentary for this?
Sure, I'll give a little intro on this one. Similar to one that the board saw last month, this is a situation where the current owner of the property kind of got thrown into a situation that they didn't know existed. What basically happened is the previous owner of the property, at some point, converted it to a residential use. It was approved as a garage initially, and they would, without permission, put an apartment in it. It was offered for sale that way. Current owner bought it that way, did not suspect anything was wrong. Fire department was called to do a propane inspection there, and ultimately the residential unit was discovered, and that's how it became an enforcement action with us. Working with the petitioner and his attorney over the past several months, we've kind of come up with a path that we believe would allow the residential unit to be there and kind of correct some issues that were discovered when they put a plot plan together. And that is to basically grant equitable waivers to allow the building's placement where it actually is, which was not in conformance with a variance that was granted over thirty years ago, to remain. And if you look at the ordinance, there's a section in there that allows for non-conforming lots, which this is, to be used residentially, which would be okay. So it's kind of a complicated way to look at it in a really fast synopsis, so I would turn it over as well to the petitioner's attorney to allow him to go through his presentation.
Okay. Would you like to go ahead and give us some information about this?
Okay. For the record, my name is Tom Quinn. I'm an attorney in Milford, New Hampshire, and what Robert has said is, you know, essentially correct. The, the structure itself was built pursuant to a, a variance. What had happened is that in nineteen eighty-six, the then-owner applied for a building permit to build the garage with, a two-story garage, three-bay, two-story garage, with a playroom recreation area above. And, you know, that was denied because of failure to meet this proposed setbacks. So he came to this board and he got a, a variance. That material is, is in, the material that I submitted as an exhibit. So the variance was granted. Unfortunately, you know, it was a different time, and there wasn't the clarity that you might have liked to see. The plot plan that was submitted showed zero setback. The garage was gonna be built right on the edge of the right-of-way. And, you know, there was gonna be forty feet setback in the rear, you know, twenty-three on the north side, and I think twenty on the south side. But part of the problem is there isn't as much land in the lot as is shown on that plan that was submitted with the variance. The entire lot is only seventy feet deep. So thirty feet frontage, forty feet rear, you know, you could maybe put up a very thin flagpole, but you're not building a, you know, thirty-eight by, thirty-two by twenty-eight foot garage with, with a, any space above it. So anyway, so the variance was granted. The, the plot plan said that, but in his testimony, he cited that the, the structure would actually be setback five feet. Now, it's not clear whether he meant from the edge of the right-of-way or from the traveled way or whatever, you know, it's just, it's only a paragraph worth admitting, so that's not really clear. But the, the point is it doesn't meet five feet either, so. Anyway, so what, what, what Robert said is correct. I mean, the property changed hands a couple of times. And, and then really, you know, almost by, by chance, I mean, how, how many years later, forty years later, it's, you know, this is discovered. So my client, you know, we've been working with Robert trying to get it resolved, and we got a, a plot plan done by Meridian Land Survey, and that's included in your material too. And that showed sort of a mixed bag, you know, I mean, it's what showed us that the, the setback from the house is, the garage and house structure is more than zero feet, but it doesn't meet the current setback of thirty feet. It's fine on the northerly side, which is the left-hand side of the building, as you're looking at it from the street. But it's, you know, it's half of what was represented. It would be in the variance hearing, 'cause it's, it's more like twenty to twenty-three feet for the, for the rear setback, and instead of being, I think it was twenty feet on the south, it's, you know, it varies between ten and eleven. So there it is, you know, that's, that's a situation we've discovered. But fortunately, you know, for, for my client, it's been there for a very long time, so we don't really have to prove variance criteria. We have the equitable waiver procedure, which was really designed for things, you know, situations like this. I won't get into the, the criteria that we don't have to meet, you know, the one A and B, because what the statute says, this is six seventy-four thirty-three, it's cited in the material, is that if the property, the structure has existed in excess of ten years without any enforcement action, either by the municipality or by the person directly affected by the structure, then we, you know, we don't have to meet the first two requirements. So we clearly meet that test. Included in the materials are photographs of, you know, the structure, which like I say, was built in nineteen eighty-seven. The, the, what I call the southeast deck, not to distinguish it from the deck on the north end of the property, which is not subject to the equitable waiver. It was only built in the spring. But the, the deck on the southeast corner of the property was part of the original buildings, and, and you can see that just by looking at the age of everything. To begin with, there's an exit out of the, I'll just call it an apartment. There's a, there's a exit out of the dwelling on the rear side, and it's, you know, it's three feet above the ground, three, three and a half feet above the ground. So there was something there, obviously, and, and what's there now is a very old and deteriorating deck, I'll call it a deck, but it's really more of a landing. It's four feet wide by six feet deep. And six of those inches just sort of cap on top of a retaining wall. There's a retaining wall that runs sort of parallel to the rear of the structure because of this, because of the steep grade of the property. And so the, the far end of the, the landing just rests on that retaining wall. So it extends out from the back of the house six feet, and it's four feet wide. It's not, you know, it's not really what you would think of as in a deck. You're not setting up chairs and lounges and stuff. I don't think there are even any railings on it. It's just, it's just the exit to the house. Actually, I've sent, I've, I've included pictures of everything so you can see, you know, the age of the structure to show that it is ten feet. I'd be ten years. And there's been no enforcement action. I mean, what Robert is talking about is a totally separate thing. What that, to the extent that it's characterized as an enforcement action, what that relates to is the deck on the north end and what was perceived to be an illegal residence, which we've now agreed is not an illegal residence. So there hasn't been an enforcement action, and, and in any event, this, the, the statute intends that, that enforcement action would be brought within a ten-year period. It's, you know, the requirement is that the structure has to have existed for ten years without an enforcement action, not that no enforcement action at any time, you know. And in fact, an enforcement action that might have been brought fifteen years after the fact would in fact be too late. Maybe not technically, because the statute wasn't in, in place back then, but, you know, but it is now. Anyway, I digress. So, that's not the way I really set this up to proceed, but let me catch up. Okay, so in addition to the ten-year requirement, we have to show that the physical, or you have to find, that the physical and dimensional violations of the applicable setbacks do not constitute public or private nuisance, nor diminish the value of the property in the area, nor interfere with the, with adversely affect any present or future uses of, of the property. That's, that's a lot of requirements to put in one little clause, but the essence of it is, you know, this, this landing, this deck is on the rear of the building. The property is surrounded by trees on three sides.
Excuse me, excuse me.
Yeah.
Are we, you're, did you kind of move on to the deck one, 'cause I think we're still talking about the equitable waiver?
This is the equitable waiver, but I'm talking about the, the southeast deck.
Okay.
Off the rear of the building on the southeast side.
No, no, I, I, I saw that. I just, you started talking about getting into the whole, the, the deck side of it, and I just
Yeah, no, but, no, because I think, you know, the structure itself is pretty clear. I mean, that was built in nineteen eighty-seven. It's, it's been with, is since that time. The, the deck is, you know, the southeast deck is a little perhaps different from the main structure. But my point is, is that it isn't really, because it's an integral part of it. It's, it's the ax, it's the egress on the rear side, and you've gotta have something there. This is four by, four feet by six feet. I don't think it's elaborate or overkill to have that there. But, but I am still focused on the equitable waiver at this point, and, and, and the southeast deck is in play because it also violates the setbacks. We'll talk about the deck on the north end totally separately as a variance. Okay? Because that's not ten years old, so that's not affected by the equitable waiver statute. Okay? So, I mean, as I say, you know, the property is, this, this structure is not creating a nuisance. It's been there since nineteen eighty-seven. Nobody has complained privately. The town hasn't complained. You know, it's, it's, and it's actually further from the right-of-way than what was granted. So I, I don't think there's any way to characterize the structure as a, as either a public or a private nuisance. It, it doesn't diminish the value of the surrounding properties, because quite frankly, you know, a lot of the properties in that, on that street have the same issue, you know. They also are on very small lots, and, and the buildings are close to the right-of-way. That's, that's true up the street. You know, as you drive past this property, five Lakeside on the right, that's true of a couple of properties up on the right-hand side. It's true of the applicant's property across the street.
It's like, all the properties are like that.
Exactly. So I'm not trying to belabor the point. I mean, you're all familiar with the neighborhood, and, you know, it's, it's small lots, and, and so setbacks are constantly being challenged. Okay.
So I guess, I'm sorry if you're, I'll, I'll pause.
The property is very consistent with the neighborhood, you know, that's. So the last item that I have to talk about is that, due to the degree of construction in existing investment in the property, you know, it, it, the cost of somehow forcing the structure into compliance is outweighed, outweighs the public benefit to be gained by doing that. And of course, in this case, I don't know that it's possible to bring it into compliance. I mean, you'd have to, you know, you've gotta be thirty feet from the front and forty feet from the back. We don't, there's no place on the lot to build. So I don't, you know, even if we'd lop off five feet, we're, we're still not in compliance, so there's, there's no way of moving it or shifting or taking down a, you know, a patio or something, I mean, a screen porch or something to bring it into compliance. It's just not, it's not feasible. It's a single structure, you know, thirty-two by twenty-eight feet. There's no moving it. There's no reconfiguring it in such a way that we meet the setbacks. So that's, that's what I have on that. So on this one, you know, for those reasons, I respectfully request that the board grant an equitable waiver to allow the existing structure, including the deck on the southeast corner, to remain in its current location as shown on the construction plan that we've submitted.
All right. Thank you very much, and I apologize for not breaking this apart, but we do need, we have the three criteria that we need to look at. So in regards to the first, the owner may demonstrate to the satisfaction of the board the violation has existed for ten years or more, and that no enforcement action, including written notice of violation, has been commenced against the violation during that time by the municipality or any person directly affected. My question to the board then is, are there any questions to the petitioner regarding this? Okay, so the next item, that the physical or dimensional violation does not constitute a public or private nuisance, nor diminish the value of other property in the area, nor interfere with, or adversely affect any present or permissible future use of the property. Do we have any questions for the petitioner regarding this? Okay, and the third item, that due to the degree of the past construction or investment made in ignorance of the facts constituting the violation, the cost of correction so far outweighs any public benefit to be gained that would be inequitable to require the violation to be corrected. Okay. So with that being said, what I would like to do is open this up to the public hearing, since we don't have since we don't have questions. Is there anybody that would like to speak in favor of this petition, or this petition for equitable waiver? Anybody that would like to speak against it? Close the public hearing. Do we have any discussion or motion?
I make a motion to approve Curtis M. Wheeler, Jr., petitioner-owner, equitable waiver of dimensional requirements under RSA six seven four dot colon thirty-three dash A and section three point zero five of the zoning ordinance to permit the existing single-family dwelling in the southeastern deck to remain ten point one feet from the front property line, whereas thirty feet is required, ten point four feet from the side property line, whereas fifteen feet is required, and twenty-two point seven feet from the rear property line, whereas forty feet is required. The parcel is located at five Lakeside Drive and R two residential district, tax map six A dash one lot, one five three, case number two thousand nineteen dash thirty-two, and no thing from staff. Lakeside Drive is full of non-conforming homes. To tell them that they've got to try to squeeze something in a seventy-foot lot in, that's was built over ten years ago, and coincidentally, the motion was made by somebody with the last name Dwyer, so I felt it was appropriate to make the motion this time around to approve it. So even though there's no relation, but, yeah, I'm looking for a second.
Second.
All right, second. All right. So motion in favor of the, of the granting of special exceptions made by Patrick, seconded by Kathy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All abstain? So motion passes five zero zero.
One virtual over.
So, that takes care of the special exception.
Equitable waiver.
Equitable waiver.
Equitable waiver.
Equitable waiver, I apologize.
I do that all the time myself.
What's the next?
All right, so the next item, Curtis M. Wheeler, Jr., petitioner-owner, variance under section three point oh five, the zoning ordinance to permit an existing deck northerly to remain twenty feet from the rear property line, whereas forty feet is required, parcels located at five Lakeside Drive and R two residential district, tax map six A dash one, lot one fifty-three, case two thousand nineteen dash thirty-three. The only request that I have, while you're going through this, is to break apart the, the five laws, so we can kind of go through them and ask questions after each one. I only mention that because it looked like in the paperwork that you had combined one and two.
I, I do, and, and that's because the Supreme Court has said it's really the same test. That's why people are confused as to whether it's a five-part test or a four-part test. I cite the case in the materials, Malachi-Glen.
Okay.
Basically said it's the same test.
Okay.
So when you go on appeal, if, if you met one test, you met the other. Because it's the same acts.
All right. If you'd like to go ahead?
And by the way, for the record, am I supposed to sign here?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Sorry.
It's not like we don't love it.
And sir, you were, you were sworn in at the beginning, correct?
Yes, I was.
Okay.
Okay. And I apologize if I have to go through some of the same material a second time, but it's a separate proceeding with a separate record, et cetera, so just bear with me. Okay, so for the record again, I'm Tom, Tom Quinn, I am an attorney practicing in Milford, New Hampshire, and I'm here on behalf of Curtis Wheeler, the applicant. By way of background, the, the lot, six A one dash one fifty-three, also known as five Lakeside Drive, is a non-conforming lot, having been created somewhere between nineteen thirteen and nineteen twenty-seven. The premises approximately seventy feet by eighty feet, so it's a legally existing non-conforming lot. The existing structure was constructed in nineteen eighty-six pursuant to a variance. My client purchased it two years, two years ago? In, in two thousand seventeen. In this past spring, two thousand nineteen, as a, as a gift, when his father was visiting, he built this nice twelve-foot by twelve-foot deck. Nobody thought anything about it, there it was. But when the property was inspected for propane connections or something, there it was. So, you know, we were, we were obviously notified about it, and my client applied for a building permit, but of course it was denied because based on the misinformation that was already in the file, you know, that nineteen eighty-six variance application, those numbers suggest that the, the deck would violate the north side setback. So again, as you're looking at the house, it's on the left, and so it looked like it would violate the setback. So we had the construction, I don't know why it's called construction, but I guess because of the deck. Anyway, we had that plan done, and, and it turns out that we don't violate the side setback, which was good news, and, and I thought that we were, we were done, that we would get an equitable waiver for the rest of it, but we were through talking about variances. But when I sat down to actually put pen to paper and prepare the equitable waiver application, I noticed that, you know, although we meet that side setback, we don't meet the rear setback. It wasn't clear to me whether we met the front setback, so I had Meridian take a look at that, which unfortunately caused the delay in getting material in. But when that plan came back, it shows that in fact we meet this front setback as well. So, and of course, once I can say, we're miles from the side setback on the other side. So the only issue that we're concerned with is the rear setback, it's obviously supposed to be forty feet, but we can't do that. So, so we filed this application for a variance. As we've said, you know, there are five parentheses, four tests that have to be met in order to obtain a variance. That's the case of Malachi-Glen Associates versus the Town of Chichester, that says the requirement that the variance does not be contrary to the public interest is related to the requirement that it be consistent with the sport, spirit of the ordinance, and the two have for years been treated together by the State Supreme Court. Now, that might be confusing enough, since the statute does have two requirements, you know? But the court went on to say that in order for the, the board to meet, to decide that these two tests have been met, the, the board must determine whether granting a variance would unduly, and to a market degree, conflict with the ordinance such that it violates the ordinance's basic zoning objectives. So now we're not talking about those two other tests at all, we're talking about whether the requested variance would unduly, and to a market degree, conflict with the ordinance. That's what the Supreme Court tells us those other two tests mean. And they don't stop there. They, they went further and said that really there are two tests for determining whether granting a viol, a variance would violate the ordinance's basic zoning objectives. And the test there is to determine whether the variance would alter the essential character of the neighborhood. And the second test is to determine whether granting the variance would threaten the public health, safety, or welfare. So even though we started with those other two tests, what we really have to determine is whether granting the variance will alter the essential character of the neighborhood or threaten the public health, safety, or welfare. And in fact, in, in many towns, you know, where I've appeared, their application for variance actually asked those questions, you know, will it alter the essential character of the neighborhood, will it, you know? I mean, that's, I'm just saying that's how well-established the language is. So, of course, we don't, we don't believe that this small variance will alter the essential character of the neighborhood. As, as we've said, it's a neighborhood that consists of very small lots, you know, primarily for the reason that, you know, these lots were created before zoning existed. So there wasn't, there weren't such things as setback. So they're small lots and, and that's, that's where they are. Fortunately, most of the lots, at least to my knowledge, have been sold in combination with one another, so at least we're not dealing with thirty-five-foot wide lots, you know, thirty-five by seventy, at least like in this case and several others on the street that are combined, so at least you've got the seventy by eighty. But the individual lots shown on that subdivision plan, you know, typically thirty-five by seventy. But anyway, so the point is, is that that's the neighborhood. Small lots, buildings that consume, I don't want to say most of the lot, but they, they do impinge on the side, sidelines, front, rear, side, you know, I mean, they, because we build the way we do. The other thing is that, to keep in mind is that, you know, it, it is a permitted use, you know, it's a residential property, the deck is an accessory structure used in connection with the existing structure. The house when it was built has a set of sliding doors where the deck is, leading, leading to the outside. In fact, like there's a floor plan in your materials that shows that. And I think the reason for that is that the, shortly after the house was built, there was a, an application to build a structure with a much more elaborate deck, you know, that went the full length of the rear, angled off, and then wrapped around to where this deck is. That, that deck was denied and, and it never went, nobody applied for a variance for that. That same plan was brought up, I think, in two thousand six. But again, it was denied, and to my knowledge, nobody applied for a variance for that. So my point with that is that I think from the day the structure was built, it was anticipated that there would be a deck there. It's just that the plans that people had were too elaborate, and, and they were shot down and nobody, nobody sought, you know, relief from, from the ZBA. So, you know, again, looking at the neighborhood, it's, it's across the street from the lake. It's a garage in the front, you know, and the, the front of the building that faces the lake is, you know, the entryway and a kitchen, sort of more of a kitchenette than a full kitchen, but anyway, my point is that this, this deck gives a very nice view of the lake that you won't get by putting it on the back of the house or in some other location. You can't move it forward because it won't meet the front setback. If you put it behind the house, you're still not going to meet the rear setback, but you lose any view of the lake.
Are we still dealing with criteria one and two?
My, my, my question was, are we, so we're on criteria?
What we're talking about is, you know, we're, my point is that this is not going to alter the essential character of the neighborhood.
Okay.
And because it's similar to what other properties are like in the neighborhood, and that there's nothing about this deck that is going to threaten the public health, safety, or welfare. I mean, that, that's, that's a given, I mean, this is the kind of test that has to fit all variances, but sometimes it's in play more than in other cases. So in this case, you know, I don't think there's anything about this deck that threatens the public health.
So I, I guess with that being said, does the board feel that the first and second questions have been answered appropriately, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest and the spirit of the ordinance is observed?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So if we could then move on to...
Three.
Three?
Okay. The next test, of course, is that the granting of their variance would do substantial justice, and that same case, Malachi-Glen, they, they went on and on talking about variance law. They say there that the, perhaps the only guiding rule in this fact is that any loss to the individual that is not outweighed by a gain to the public is an injustice, which is good language if you're an applicant. And I don't see a public benefit by denying this variance. The, it's, it's a modest deck, you know, it's not a large wraparound deck, we're not taking a larger bite of the apple than we need. It's twelve by twelve feet, norm, you know, a moderate-sized deck. Setback, positioned well to give a view of the lake, I don't see anything to be gained by the public to, to deny the request. So I mean, I feel like we meet that one as well.
Okay. Does the board have any questions about item three?
No.
Okay.
Okay, I'm catching on to the way you, you do things, okay.
We like to break it down through each of the laws.
I get it, I get it, no, I didn't, I didn't get that at first, okay. The fourth one is granting the variance will not diminish the value of the surrounding properties. Again, everything, you know, I've said suggests that, it's consistent with the neighborhood, other people have the same issues, nobody's complaining. I did submit a letter, you know, for the record, by a local real estate agent who's familiar with the neighborhood, and Jim Spelman, who gave his opinion, that the, you know, the deck does not cause any diminution in value to any surrounding properties. That's what I have on that one.
Thank you. An unnecessary hardship?
Unnecessary hardship is that, as I said, the premises consist of two lots, seventy feet by eighty feet, and, and given that, it's just extremely difficult to build on the lot in general, but something like this in, in particular, because again, it's with a forty-foot setback and a thirty-foot front, it's, it's hard to meet all the setbacks. Even a flagpole doesn't meet the setbacks. So that's an unusual condition of the property. It's not, it's not unique in the sense that other lots in the neighborhood have the same concern, but it's, it's an unusual characteristic in the district, and the setbacks, of course, apply not just to this one street, but apply to the district. So the ordinance itself is obviously aimed at larger lots, I mean, it's, you know, you look at your minimum lot size around this, around the various residential parts of town, and, and the setbacks make more sense. But, but here, it's, you know, you, you just can't meet, you know, because of the size of the lots, you can't meet all of the setbacks.
Okay. Yes.
Okay, good, thanks, I'll mention that, thanks. I will. What, you know, what my client was pointing out is that one of the reasons that his, his dad built this deck was that, you know, they had the sliding doors, and there's a three-foot drop from there to the grade, and, you know, he was concerned with that, and this solves that problem.
That's a good...
I guess my, my only question is, were the previous variances that were requested for that deck made by different owners?
Yes. Well, they weren't, they weren't variances, they were permits. To my knowledge, nobody has applied for a variance for the decks. They submitted building plans to the town and requested building permits and were turned down because they didn't meet the setbacks, and then they dropped it, they didn't go for a variance.
I'm aware of some of them, they were prior owners.
Okay. Yeah, so I, we've never, I don't think there's ever been a variance request denied for a deck in this, for a deck period, but for a deck in this area either, you know?
Okay, thank you.
Let's see.
So, with unnecessary hardship taken care of, the next thing that we would like to do is open up the public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anybody that would like to speak against this petition?
All right.
Closing the public hearing. So now that's closed, do I hear a motion or a discussion?
Motion.
Motion to approve Curtis M. Wheeler, Jr., petitioner-owner, variance under section three point zero five of the zoning ordinance to permit an existing deck northerly to remain twenty feet from the rear property line, whereas forty feet is required, parcels located at five Lakeside Drive in the R two residential district, tax map six A dash one, lot one five three, case number two thousand nineteen dash thirty-three.
Second.
Seconded by Lynn.
Okay, motion made by Patrick, seconded by Lynn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All abstain? So the motion passes five zero zero.
Thank you all for your time.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
All opposed? All abstain? So the motion passes five zero zero.
Thank you all for your time.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is APMK Ventures LLC special exception under three point oh nine of the zoning ordinance to permit the conversion of an existing single-family dwelling, constructed before June twenty-ninth, nineteen fifty-three, to a two-family dwelling. Parcels located sixteen Depot Street in the I-1 Industrial, Elderly Housing Overlay, and Aquifer Conservation Districts and Wellhead Protection Area. Tax map six E dash one, lot zero six one, case two thousand and nineteen dash thirty-five. Robert, are there any staff comments for this?
Just a quick summary. Applicant is going to be looking for a special exception to prevent the conversion of the existing single-family dwelling to a two-family. This counts as a special exception in this case because the dwelling was constructed prior to June of nineteen fifty-three, so the zoning ordinance allows that to be done by special exception instead of the variances that would be required for such a conversion under normal circumstances.
And I guess before we get started, as far as the eight criteria, do we want to stop after each point? Yeah, we're not. Okay.
Doesn't work to stop.
Okay.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Brett Allard with Bernstein Scher. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, APMK Ventures LLC. And here with me, sitting here, is Peter McClintock, the principal of the applicant. So this property is at sixteen Depot Street. As Robert said, we're asking for a special exception under section three oh nine zoning ordinance to permit a conversion of an existing single-family dwelling constructed prior to June twenty-ninth, nineteen fifty-three that does not conform to current dimensional requirements to a two-family dwelling. The property is in the I-1 Industrial Zone, and it is serviced by Town Sewer and Water. Section three point oh nine allows this use by special exception as long as you meet the criteria, since the existing single-family dwelling was constructed in eighteen forty-nine. And the special exception allows for additions, alterations, or improvements to the existing dwelling, which is a five-bedroom, three-bathroom home. After the conversion, the unit one would be just over nineteen hundred square feet, and unit two would be just over twelve hundred square feet. This is a decidedly mixed-use area on Depot Street. There's a number of different uses here, so this is the subject property. We have office condos here, another office condo here. There are some single-family uses across the street, but then after that, as you get closer to DW Highway, you have kindergarten, a large multifamily apartment complex here, seven-family, multifamily building here. And then as you go out further, you have a single-family with an ADU, a single-family with an ADU, a two-family dwelling in the gas station in Reed's Ferry Market out on DW Highway. That's all I have for background information, if the board would like me to move into the criteria. Otherwise, I can answer any questions.
Yes, please, if you can move to the criteria.
So the first criteria is the additions, alterations, or improvements are for a use currently permitted within the zoning district. This property is situated in the I-1 Industrial Zone, as I said. And because the use of the property is residential and is tied into municipal water and sewer, the ordinance, in this case, defaults back to the R4 zone requirements, and two-family homes are permitted by right in the R4 zone, so this use is currently permitted.
Any questions by the board?
Second criteria, the additions, alterations, or improvements are ordinarily and customarily associated with the existing building and/or use. It's not unusual for a single-family home to be converted to a two-family or multifamily, as you see with, not that single-family and ADUs are exactly the same, but they're similar, and those are certainly very common, and it's certainly very common in this area, which has a mix of two-family, single-family, ADU-type uses. And pretty important, I think, as, you know, the housing crisis in New Hampshire and the need for more housing and affordable housing, and everything's sort of, you know, trending that way. So I would say that this type of use is ordinarily and customarily associated with single-family homes.
Any questions? All right.
The additions, alterations, or improvements would serve to promote the reuse, restoration, rehabilitation, or otherwise enhanced in existing building or structure, especially in historic or potentially historic building or structure. Certainly a historic structure here, built in eighteen forty-nine. The interior does need a bit of work, and my client plans on pretty much gutting and renovating it in terms of the bathrooms, kitchens, you know, it's going to be pretty nice after he's done. So definitely going to be some enhancement improvements to the property. And while it's not a part of the criteria number three here, it probably will add a pretty good amount of value to the home as well.
Questions? All right, thank you.
The fourth criteria, the additions, alterations, or improvements would not result in increased hazards to vehicles or pedestrians, impair or impede emergency vehicle access, or the provision of emergency services, or encroach on planned right-of-way corridors. There's not currently any types of hazard like these. There's no impediments to emergency vehicles, there's a big driveway with plenty of access. This is going to be an interior reconfiguration, so nothing's going to change in that regard. And as I said, there's a significant amount of parking, at least my client thinks you could get eight spots in there. There's, you can park against the garage here, you can see that this cut-around, there's sort of more parking space, it's already paved into the existing driveway, and there's a bunch of space on either side of the driveway as you pull down.
Any questions? All right.
The additions, alterations, or improvements would not result in unreasonable impacts to abutting properties by way of increased noise, visual blight, odor, or other nuisance. And in terms of interior reconfiguration of a single-family to a two-family, none of those are at issue here. The size of the home, existing home is sizable enough to facilitate a second unit, as I said, with parking in the square footage as it is right now. And again, this is a mixed-use area with a lot of multifamily, two-family uses.
I do have to say that I'm kind of confused why we have a requirement that it will not increase odor, splitting a single family going into a, is that really?
I'm equally confused.
Do two families smell differently from single-family houses?
I'm not entirely sure, I've never run into that before.
I just, I find it entertaining that that's actually worded that way.
Two versus one.
Okay, I'll buy it.
Makes sense. Sorry, I digress.
Number six, adequate parking and other necessary support facilities will be provided for the existing building or structure, as well as for the proposed addition, alteration, or improvement. Again, I'm not going to repeat myself, there's plenty of parking, sufficient width of the driveway, and the home is already tied into municipal water and sewer, and both units will be served by municipal water and sewer.
Any questions?
The proposed, number seven, the proposed improvements would have been allowed by right prior to adoption of the zoning ordinance provision at issue. There was no ordinance in eighteen forty-nine. So if you wanted to do this, you could do this and whatever else you wanted to do.
Fair point.
Eight.
Number eight, last criteria, the proposed improvements cannot reasonably be constructed in a different way or in a different portion of the property so as to comply with existing setback requirements. The house is there, it can't be moved. I think even if it could, I'd roughed out some of the measurements just for fun, and I don't actually think there's a place you could sort of copy and paste it hypothetically and make it work with existing dimensional requirements. So that's the reason we have the special exception that allows this use by right as long as you meet the criteria.
Any questions regarding that? All right. Seems pretty cut and dry, actually. With that being said, we'd like to open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anybody that would like to speak against this petition? All right, closing the public hearing. Do we have a motion or a discussion?
I make a motion to approve APMK Ventures LLC petitioner-owner special exception under section three point zero nine of the zoning ordinance to permit the conversion of an existing single-family dwelling, constructed before June twenty-ninth, nineteen fifty-three, to a two-family dwelling. The parcel is located sixteen Depot Street in the I-1 Industrial, Elderly Housing Overlay, and Aquifer Conservation Districts and Wellhead Protection Area. Tax map six E dash one, lot zero six one, case number two thousand and nineteen dash thirty-five.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made by Patrick, seconded by Lynn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All abstain? The motion passes five zero zero.
Thank you much.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is Stephen M. Scher, petitioner-owner. Variance under section three point oh five of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a single-family dwelling, one point five feet from the rear property line where as forty feet is required, four point seven feet from the side property line where as fifteen feet is required. The parcel is located twenty-four Lakeside Drive in R2 Residential District. Tax map six A dash one, lot one eleven, case two thousand and nineteen dash thirty-seven. Before we get started, Robert, do you have anything to add to this?
In this one, I don't, do you have anything to add, Casey, in this one? So, yeah, we defer to the petitioner to make the presentation.
Okay. And sir, have you been sworn in?
I was not.
Okay, please raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
So I'm supposed to sign here, right?
Yep, and then please state your name into the microphone. Hopefully, it's live for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, I'm Joe Wickert. I'm a land surveyor, and we're working with the Schers who are in the audience this evening. So I haven't done much of marimac, but I'm trying to get the hang of how you do things. So I guess we have two applications, so my assumption is we want to handle two separately, right?
Yes. Yes, please. And if you could, once you're going through the criteria.
Yep. So the first application we have in front of you is for lot one eleven on tax map six A. So that's the waterfront lot. And so on the plan that you have, the left-hand side shows the existing conditions, and the right-hand side would show what is going to be proposed, should everything be approved and be built out. So currently, there's a small residence that sits close to the water with a deck that's a foot and a half off of the water. And so the proposal consists of to maintain that deck, rebuild that deck in place, but then to take the L-shaped house and replace it with a twenty-eight by thirty-two residence. It'd be a single-family residence, two bedrooms. If you can look at, the house according to the tax records was built in nineteen forty-five. It's an older house, one-story, everything's kind of cut up and small, sort of that vintage. And it's just not economically viable to rehab. There's too many issues with it structurally and things like that. So what the Schers would like to do is to go ahead and remove this house and replace it with a twenty-eight by thirty-two residence. So we're going to maintain the water, the deck would stay as is, it's going to be rebuilt in place, so that would maintain a one-and-a-half-foot setback off the water. On this southerly, southwest alley corner, I think we have two and a half there, we're going to increase that to four. We're going to take the southeast alley corner from three seven to five four. We are going to take, the one we're reducing is this northeast corner of the L, the actual houses, I think that's seven point five, but the wraparound deck is two point eight feet. And so when we rebuild it, it would go to four point seven feet with no wraparound deck. So at the end of the day, this, you know, the Schers bought the property in two thousand and eleven. These three sheds were already existing. There's a leach field somewhere in here that we're not really sure about the condition or type of system. So as part of this, it's basically a full redevelopment of the property. So we, there was an alternative design system, one of the clean water, I believe it was, that's already been submitted to DES, that approval is pending our shoreland permit approval. So at the end of the day, between the house and the sheds, currently, we have fourteen hundred and fifteen square feet of building, we'd reduce it to thirteen twenty-four. There's going to be a reduction in the coverage, lot coverage, from twenty-one sixty-two to eighteen eighty-seven. And out of that eighteen eighty-seven, almost a third of that is porous paper. So I think we've done a good job trying to make the property more complying to the current state rules, and then we have tried to balance out, we've had, tried to balance out the dimensional requirements. So obviously, in this district, even with the non-conforming lot standards, we would need thirty-foot front yard, forty-foot rear, and fifteen-foot sides. Two cases ago, you had the same kind of scenario on Lakeside Drive. Our front lot is roughly, it goes anywhere from forty-eight feet at the water to eighteen out back, roughly a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and thirty long. So, you know, we don't have a big building envelope to work in, and it's kind of pie-shaped. So what we'll do is, we'll kind of go through the criteria for the house lot. So it's our opinion that granting the variances wouldn't be contrary to the public interest. You know, the public interest is, we're going to make sure that we're obviously, that we're not creating any overcrowding, any unsafe conditions or health issues. So our, you know, our hope is the board would see that by upgrading everything, a new septic system, building a new efficient house, that's going to be slightly, at least three out of the four corners, slightly more complying to the current ordinance, reducing the lot coverage, we believe that's going to help prove, that should help prove that approval of the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. Number two would be granting the variance would not be contrary to the spirit of the zoning ordinance. You know, I think the zoning ordinance, the current zoning ordinance obviously wasn't predicated on lots that were forty, forty-seven hundred square feet in size. So, you know, we're trying to comply to it as much as we can in full compliance. I think for all practical purposes, you could, in this, on this lot, there's a small sliver that would run approximately eighteen feet wide down to zero, and I think the dimension's about thirty feet. So, you know, there's not much that could be built with full compliance, so we're hoping that the board would see that our proposal is, we are trying to comply with the spirit of the ordinance. If you look on to the north, this northerly of Butter was rebuilt in twenty-twelve through benefit of variance, and the southerly, the southerly house doesn't show, but according to the tax records, I believe that was built or rebuilt in nineteen ninety. So I think, you know, those two were kind of the smaller house in between the two. Number three, by granting the variance.
I apologize, I should have stopped you after each one.
Oh, sorry.
Does the board have any questions about granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest? Or granting the variance would not be contrary to the spirit of the ordinance? All right. Number three.
So we believe by granting the variance, substantial justice would be done because it would allow the applicant to build a new house on the existing lot of record. I believe almost all the properties have some kind of zoning relief or noncompliance, depending on when they were built. And we think that the new construction and the new improvements will actually be a benefit to everyone. It's going to make, we're going to have a new approved septic, state-approved septic system, they should be more highly functioning. Hopefully, that'll reduce any kind of issues to the lake. So that's why I believe that we think substantial justice would be done.
Any questions from the board? Ben?
Number four.
Where's the well in relation to the, how far is it from the septic?
Public water, I think. Oh, two lots down. Yeah. So they have, there's a shared well with a common water line that's to the south, it's six Lakeside. Twenty, I'm sorry, twenty-six. Well, it's the north of Metrodome.
Any problem with the water quality?
No, we also have twenty-two Lakeside and twenty-six both have lines to the house, but we're currently using twenty-six Lakeside because when the prior owners built it, I want halves with him on the well.
Go ahead. Okay, so go on to number four.
Yep.
So the proposed use would not diminish the surrounding property values. We believe that should the variance be approved and the construction occur, there's obviously going to be a significant upgrade in the value of the subject property. And historically, if you increase the value of your lot, you increase the value of the surrounding lots.
All right, any questions from the board? All right, unnecessary hardships?
So our basic hardship is, with that, the lot size and the configuration, we really can't make anything fit. So we have tried to do a good job, the Schers have spent a lot of time trying to find a house plan that would be functional for them, but still be consistent with the neighborhood, and we believe that, we believe that the proposal meets that requirement. You know, what we wrote down was the lots are undersized and cannot sustain any structure that fully complies with the current setback requirements, and other situations were noted in the neighborhood, so.
All right, do we feel that that meets hardship?
And then 5-2 is the proposed use is a reasonable one.
We actually don't, if you mean the first one, you're also. So I guess with that being said, are there any other discussion from the board before we open the public hearing? All right. So opening it to the public, anyone that would like to speak in favor? Anyone that would like to speak against? Closing the public hearing. Motion or discussion?
I think that, like before, Lakeside Drive, I mean, the properties there are just, they're...
Anything that people are doing in this area is gonna improve the situation. We're going from a non-conforming to a less non-conforming.
And updating the septic, and yeah.
Everything's, everything's just good.
It's a plus-plus, so. I'm gonna make a motion to approve Stephen M. Scher petitioner-owner variance under section 3.05 the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a single-family dwelling 1.5 feet from the rear property line whereas 40 feet is required, and 4.7 feet from the side property line whereas 15 feet is required. The parcel is located...
You can put the motion on the record and then I'll say my point.
At 24 Lakeside Drive in the R2 Residential District, tax map 6A-1, Lot 111, case number 2019-37. Take it away, Rob.
Just real quick, oh yeah, no conditions or anything like that. The board actually does need to hear the reasonable use criteria because it's actually Point B, which is, yeah, so you let him put that on the record, we can include it as part of the justification, then you can move on with the rest of the motion.
So if you could just read Part B.
So the proposed use is a reasonable one. In this, in this district, residential use is allowed use by right, and that's what we're proposing is residential use.
We good?
I'll second.
Motion made by Patrick, seconded by Lynn. Seems to be a theme tonight.
Patrick's just excited to be able to make these motions. Hasn't been able to do it for a number of years.
Three years. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All abstained? So the motion passes 5-0-0. So with that being said, the...
Last one of the night.
The last one of the night.
I don't know if that's the good one or the bad one, it's a jinx.
Sorry, I do have to read it into the, into the record. I apologize. So Stephen M. Scher, variance is under section 3.05 of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a garage 18 feet from the property line whereas 30 feet is required, 27.4 feet from the rear property line whereas 40 feet is required, 6 feet from the side property line whereas 15 feet is required. Parcel is located at 21 Lakeside Drive in the R2 Residential, tax map 6A-1, Lot 147, case 2019-38. And just before we get started, Robert, do you have anything you'd like to add? Thank you.
So again, Mr. Chairman, I'm Joe Wickert here tonight on behalf of the Schers. This lot is on the east side of Lakeside Drive, it's Lot 147, even though I just noticed our paperwork says 146, but that's a type of graphic error. So very similar to the last case. It's a 5,054 square foot lot. Currently, there's a single-car garage and carport on it. We'd like to replace it with a three-car garage. There will be a net increase in the buildable area from, for the garage structure, from 483 square feet to 864 square feet. However, because of the reconfiguration and the consolidation of everything, there's actually total, there's gonna be almost a 30% reduction from 2,107 square feet to 1,512 square feet of lot coverage. And out of that 1,512 square feet, almost 650 of that is porous pavers. So we've done, I think we've done a good job of trimming down the lot coverage. The area that's to the, to the north, this gravel area that's kind of with the retaining wall, that'll be just reclaimed and lawn. As I forgot to mention, but we are gonna have a, the house, the garage is gonna have drains that go into dry wells, so there won't be any surface water. We are needing relief on the setback, so we have a setback of 18-foot proposed where 30 is required. We have a rear setback of 27.4 where 40 is required, and we have a side setback of 6 where 15 is required, but 5.9 exists. Is the lot only 70-foot deep? Full compliance with a 40-foot rear and a 30-foot front's impossible. So we believe there has to be some granting of the variant, some granting of a variance. So we also, in the packet we submitted, the, an elevation view of the garage, it's kind of like a country barn type of feel, has the cupola on top. We believe, so going on to number one, we believe that approval of the variance to allow the applicants to rebuild the new three-stall modern garage would be, and replace the carport and existing gravel, gravel park and area would be, it's a non-conforming lot of record that cannot sustain it. We believe the expansion of the garage should eliminate the need for the other structures that are on the other lot, and that the, the proposed garage is more aesthetically pleasing for the neighborhood and more functional for the garage, more functional for the owners.
No questions?
Any questions?
Granted the variance would not be contrary to the spirit of the zoning ordinance. Garages are, I think that are allowed accessory use in the residential district, but we obviously need the zoning, the dimensional relief due to the size of the lot, and there are other, there is a garage already, and there are other, we had noted other lots in the neighborhood, so we believe that approval of the lot would not be contrary to the spirit of the ordinance.
No questions?
Number three, granting the variance, substantial justice would be done. It would allow the applicant to build a new garage on the undersized lot of records. Many of the surrounding properties were built with some kind of zoning relief. My office did to the north in 2012, and it was the same situation. We can see no benefit to the public by denying the variance request, and the hardship to the applicant would outweigh any, would outweigh any perceived public gain, so it's our opinion that the variance should be approved.
Questions?
Number four, again with the, on the last one, we believe that the construction of the garage is gonna be a significant increase in value to the subject property, and such we believe it's on an increase, hopefully it would increase the value of the surrounding properties.
But no kitchenette?
Pardon?
No kitchenette?
No kitchenette.
Okay. No big deck?
Just a garage, yeah.
Just a garage. I'm good.
Questions? Okay. So unnecessary hardship?
So general purpose of the zoning ordinance is to prevent overcrowding, unsafe situations. Subject lot is, already has garage on it, and it needs a dimensional variance because the current lots are undersized, and approval of these variants would allow the applicants to make a substantial investment in their property.
Any questions? All right, number two?
And so again, in the residential district, accessory use for a garage is allowed use.
All right. Any further questions from the board? All right. I guess at this point we'll open the public hearing again. Any, anyone like to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone like to speak against this petition? Closed. All right.
Patrick, you got something to add?
No, you got this one.
Ben can second.
I recommend that Stephen Scher be granted variance under section 3.05 zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a garage 18 feet from the front property line whereas 30 feet is required, 27.4 feet from the rear property line whereas 40 feet is required, and 6 feet from the side property line whereas 15 feet is required. This parcel is located at 21 Lakeside Drive in the R2 Residential District, tax map 6A-1, Lot 147, case number 2019-38.
Second.
Motion made by Kathy, seconded by Patrick. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All abstained?
We're good.
Motion passes 5-0-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right.
Motion to approve the meeting minutes as...
That goes without saying.
Babusik Lake T-shirt sale the weekend after Thanksgiving, you can all come by and see the old house, and buy a T-shirt and support the lake.
Do we have any discussion, possible action regarding other items of concern? Anything?
Yeah, I guess the only minor thing that I would raise is, I probably should have done this at the start of the meeting, but this is Casey's first meeting with you guys, so this is all Casey's, she's our assistant planner.
Do you see what fun we have?
Any other items of discussion? Do I hear a motion?
I move we approve the minute that's presented.
I already read them.
Yeah, I read them.
I did too.
Tiffany's gonna say that.
I didn't say that. First you got into the minutes, I seconded it, you motioned, I seconded it.
So one motion. Patrick second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All abstained? So 5-0-0?
I make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Drew can't.
Drew can't.
She's not seated.
See? I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll still second it.
Seconded by Kathy. Recommended by Drew.
Ben's still sitting over there. What happened? What the hell just happened?
Good evening, everyone.